Welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting of Friday, January 24th, 2020. First item up is schedule of payments that's going around. Minutes Executive Session, December 5th, 2019. You should all have a copy, I gave you one. So take a moment to read it and then I will hold on. Hi Jen, here you go. I still have two that I have to write up, I haven't done yet. I know, I know. Wow, the next one will be different. Does anybody have any comments or questions on those minutes? Do I have a motion to accept but not?
Release.
Release.
Someone second?
All those in favor? Thank you. Next, possible vote to approve, oh, there's Jason, he's not here yet.
I think he's right outside.
Jason! Possible vote to approve ECAT audio and visual enhancements to downtown auditorium and Simmons Lecture Hall.
He's for some.
Dr. Cabral.
He's making comments.
Okay. Do you want to speak to this first?
Sure, so Jason Daniels from ECAT is going to present to the committee on proposed visual enhancements for the Charlie Delrin poll auditorium as well as the Simmons Lecture Hall at Albert East High School.
And so, not only do we have Jason, but we have Michael Cardoza, who is the, what is your company's name?
Re-Invising Technology.
Right, so they're going to speak to us about this.
Jason.
Yeah.
All right. A couple more coming, just a few copies.
Maybe if you could tell us a little something about your company?
Sure, yeah. So we launched three years ago and we're an AV integrator focused in the nonprofits. We design conference rooms, classrooms, and collaboration spaces, including live theaters. And we do the audiovisual projectors, TV screens, cameras for these type of spaces.
You all know Jason.
Yeah.
Hi Jason.
Hi. What's it? Oh. So, where did, I guess the, in sort of furthering ECAT's mission to sort of be a platform and, you know, support the educational programs in town, we're interested in, the board approved the expenditure of like improving the audiovisual infrastructure at OA and in particular at the Simmons Lecture Hall where the school committee meetings happen and a number of lectures occur and in the auditorium. So I've been working with Mike Cardoza on this and so I just have a brief description of some of the benefits that we'll be providing in each room and so, so with the Simmons Lecture Hall, we want to mimic or emulate what we've done at Town Hall where we have robotic cameras set up and a presentation system that feeds into the broadcast and a sort of a new presentation system for the room itself, which I know that kind of projector will hold, so we kind of feel like that would be an important, something to be able to give to the schools. And it also, it would, you know, we could have a single operator and we'd be able to broadcast or stream those meetings or whatever was happening in that room if you have presentations live. So we think that would add some great benefit to the lecture hall. And in terms of the proposal for the auditorium, what we, what we are looking to do is install five robotic cameras and update the cabling within the room so that any presentations that are happening down at the stage have a full HD infrastructure up to the projector upstairs. We'd be able to utilize all the existing audio inputs that are already there, which are great. And again, the ability to broadcast or stream live from the space. And this control room would be at the top of the auditorium, so it could actually be a single operator or you could have a small team in that room to, to cover concerts, town meetings, other events, and really get it out there to the community in a really fast and live or nearly live way.
And ECAT is providing all these resources?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we just signed a new contract with the town and we're, you know, fortunate to, the town negotiated a, you know, capital funding for ECAT to make these kind of investments and so, you know, we're looking to cover the cost of the whole integration here and we just kind of help the, help the school out here right by the Easton Public Schools.
That's great. Jason, have you met with Wes Hall about the, the two spaces?
I did, well, I have met with him in the fall. We started talking about this because the ideas were, were in the fall, we kind of, I said, how about the Simmons? You know, he was, she was very receptive, I guess. It was more of an, in the abstract, but, but he was very receptive.
So he, so we should share these details with him? He doesn't have these details?
No, he hasn't.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then, Michael, you said at our meeting that you could use some of the stuff that's already there, wiring or whatever you were talking about. You can use what's in there, right?
Exactly. So we're lucky once already installed in the space, when the building was built. And then anything new is actually set to be installed by the town electrician to keep costs down.
And Michael knows that auditorium inside and out because he was there for how many years?
Twelve years.
Well, he is.
Since we was built.
Right, so that's.
Is the electrical work included with the materials or is that something we should plan?
Uh, that, it's, the electrical work is not included in here.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Do you have any idea how much that would cost?
Steve has been included and we've had a lot of chats with him about it, so I'm not sure if he has, I don't know how that works in the town.
Well, is it mostly just labor that he's doing or?
Yeah, just labor.
Yeah, so it's kind of like he'll do it during his regular, normal work hours, so he can incorporate it.
All right, just want to make sure there's any cost that we?
Yeah, as far as like supplies and stuff like that, need wiring, that's.
Yep, so we kept, we were carrying that.
That, carrying that, so you're just looking for the labor portion?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so there's no cost to schools?
I don't believe so.
Okay. That's great. Can I ask a question? So obviously all of this, this work allows ECAT to do its, its job and stream things out and provide that benefit to the community. Is there any benefit that the people, the students will use or when we're doing stuff? In other words, will that have been benefit anyone besides the work that ECAT is doing? And what's a liability if something happens to this equipment? Who's liable for it?
Right, right, well, so we're, I mean, we're planning to kind of extend our insurance to cover the equipment there. I mean, my vision would be that we have a, sort of like a train the trainer so we could train the media teacher over at OA to know how to use the equipment so that we could graduate to a point where the students could produce the programming themselves, you know, cover a concert themselves. And so they're gaining those skills on how to, how to use that production equipment? Is that part of?
So this is not, it's not gifting equipment to the schools, it remains ECAT property?
Uh, right, correct.
But it could be used by others, just, well, kind of just like it is now.
The goal is that, yeah, because we've, we have.
I mean, you have people that loan out a camera, you know, to film something and then bring it back to you to air, you know, like the basketball games or the.
Oh, sure, yeah, the library, the Grange, the local organizations use art equipment all the time.
And they got it at Town Hall too and our insur, the ECAT insurance covers what's at Town Hall, so if anything happened up there to the equipment, same thing, right?
Correct, yeah.
Well, we have learners using the equipment too, so.
And the most expensive parts of the cameras and those actually come with a five-year accidental warranty, so if it gets damaged by someone hitting it, it's covered.
Anybody else have any questions?
The monitor, is that replaced in Simmons Hall?
Yeah.
Is that replacing the whiteboard?
The projection, correct. So the, the projection screen, we asked Wes and a couple others if it was actually used and they said it wasn't. So we'd be putting in an 86-inch LED screen, one you can get at Costco, like an LG one, replacing the whiteboard there and the projector will also go. So it takes it high definition. And then when you're recording it, you can put a nice backdrop behind it.
Calming ocean. Did you have a question?
Yeah, so have you spoken to Conso to make sure that the, that the technology is comparable or can work with that?
Compatible?
Compatible, I suppose.
Yeah, so we did work with John. John did have a little pushback on the screen, but we talked through it.
Okay.
So we'll be taking it all to digital, which right now it's analog, so it's going to be pretty nice and great.
As long as you kind of touch the bases.
Yep.
So is this something that requires a written agreement, which we have some ECAT, or?
Well, I, I have to admit, I didn't know about this because the chair is on the committee and organized it and I, I have to admit, I thought it would get, so I thought that would be in it. So in terms of having the materials in the school, I don't, I can't answer that. I didn't, I didn't really do that.
I'm not sure either, so who do we ask about that? Okay, so we could probably ask her on Monday, yes. But I mean, I think it's, and as you know, because I'm on ECAT with you, but it's a great, you know, when you go to Town Hall, they can film every meeting without that person being there, like Roland being there. And, you know, he has to pack up and everything. This way it'll be all there, they turn it on, they turn it off and it's so much easier.
I don't, I don't think anybody disagrees with that.
No, no, no.
It's certainly generous. We just have to keep in mind, we have students, teenagers, learners using the equipment and I just want to make sure that there's just a clear understanding, what's the role of responsibility, should anything break or anything like that? You have to take those things, it's much different than Town Hall in that, in that sense. But it does not mean that the kit isn't completely exciting, generalized can be wonderful, we just have to make sure that the school department is conducted properly, that's our obligation.
Would, would people be comfortable taking a vote to approve the location of this equipment at Albert East as the two locations contingent on approval of the attorney? Or would you rather, I mean, I kind of hate to keep.
Uh, it's your vote, I, I'm just asking if.
I think, I think that's a great idea. I feel like Jason's been waiting to do this since last summer, so.
Because it may be a while before we meet again and then have to wait till the next meeting, so if, this way we could call the attorney Monday and maybe clear, I mean, maybe, I mean, if not, obviously there'll have to be more discussion.
So that's your motion?
You think that's an agreement that we would want to see before we?
Well, I mean, I, I think again, if legal comes up with, just, I mean, essentially what we would be voting on is approval to locate in those two venues enhancements for our video, audio video technology contingent on the approval of the, of our attorney. If she says, I'd like to see a written agreement first, you could add to the motion that, you know, she could compose a brief, I mean, it seems like a pretty straightforward agreement, but it may be more complicated than I think. I just hate to see them have to wait for the next school committee meeting for us to have this discussion and, but if people aren't comfortable.
We, I mean.
The other thing too though, that equipment, especially in the auditorium, town meeting, you know, different functions of town not related to school, it just happens to be in the school.
Yeah, school property though, which directly we do have.
Right, we have to be in charge of that.
Yeah. So, so.
Go ahead Jane.
Does that mean that if, for example, a dance school is in an auditorium, using the auditorium and they want to straighten their recital, they can do that?
It could be a revenue.
I'm just, you can head back to the list. And then, and then what's the liability? Because we have a contract with that school or that whoever is coming in and using the space, they've signed a contract.
I mean, they can still do their thing if that's, I mean, we can discuss, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I mean, that, they would go through ECAT, if they wanted their dance recital now without this equipment, if they wanted to hire ECAT, they could, right? I mean, they call you up and they say, we're having this thing, could you cover it for us? Don't you just go and do it?
Well, not if it's not a school organization.
I don't know, what, do you? Do you do the karate thing? Do you do the dance thing?
No, not right now.
You do mostly school stuff in town meeting?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, public.
No, I was going to say like, I think actually Jane brings up a good point. Right now we don't broadcast, I don't think we've ever had any agreements with any of the dance groups. However, now that they have this Facebook Live, you theoretically, they could contract, it would be a separate deal that they would do with ECAT, but a dance recital or a dance school could contact them and potentially have their dance broadcast on Facebook Live for whatever charge it is. So I don't know, I mean, that is, I mean, you got to kind of think, not just like, what's it funny, it's kind of a broad type of question, so theoretically you could have recitals broadcast live. And sometimes I do know like, my nephew plays hockey and he plays in different areas and I watch him on TV and they broadcast, you know, live on my, on my phone or whatever, so, so yeah, things can get broadcast.
Well, it could be a source of revenue for ECAT, but we would have to put it, you know, some sort of notice on, you know, there are contracts with individual organizations that that equipment is, if they wish to use to have some sort of live broadcast, they would have to contact ECAT and make those arrangements for an additional, you know, and pay ECAT for that. You probably have to talk to your board about whether you can take funds from.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly a longer conversation, but it occurred to me that there, there would be other events in that, in that space.
Would there be an issue with waiting a couple of weeks to learn next, so that we can, I feel like there's a lot of issues to flush out and the next school committee meeting is the 13th, which is three weeks, is that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's like a problem if we delay it a little bit or if there's, I mean.
I mean, I don't have any problem on my end, I'd rather do it right.
I would be more comfortable with that. I just feel like there's so many different variables and so many different parties that could potentially be involved, but what do you, what do you have?
Yeah, I could draw my butt off something that seems so simple, right, like yardly. I'm sort of into.
Right, Mike, that's not a problem with the, what you had set up for ECAT with everything that you had written down at our last meeting? You're okay with that?
No, close valid in February.
So what we'll do is we'll table this until the February 13th meeting. I'll talk to legal and.
Well, I think it's, well, yeah, you could too, but I have actually.
Somebody will talk to legal and get this straightened out and about who does what, where, when, what.
And liability.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
So in Simmons Hall or the auditorium, if it's not live streamed, in the auditorium, is the regular soundboard still available for people?
Yes.
And what about in Simmons Hall? Like if they want to hook up a computer and do a presentation on a trip there?
Yeah, you walk in and Simmons Hall plug in, it'll automatically turn on the screen and put sound through the speakers in the ceiling.
We might even be able to read some of those chats on the 86-inch TV.
It's like they show these wonderful presentations and I'm like, do you need like opera glasses?
Yes. You need a telescope.
Yes.
Okay, is that all right with you? And thank you very, I think, I'm very excited about this.
No, I mean, we're, we're very grateful for this, this is, we just have to be able to protect this.
Why don't you just leave everything? We have to do, no, no, obviously it's our obligation.
Well, you know, we're going to stick your nose in everything.
This gives us a chance also to kind of make Wes aware of, you know, kind of the final product that you folks have come up with, because it sounds like he, which would not surprise me at all, was totally supportive of the concept, but this would give him a chance to kind of have some more information too, so makes sense, so I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Jason. All right, so it's very tight enough so that the four guys don't have to bring their key or anything. Next, review of organization facilities use fees, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks, actually, I just want to ask to table this one until, until October 13th because I have some more information I want to collect for you. I would direct your attention though, just to the current declassifications, it's a chart that looks like this, how we determine who gets charged what and then on the back is the chart we see. I would like to get some guidance, you know, some clarification on guidance, I have not since I've been superintendent, gone through that with you. So to make sure this is still the declassification you want, we've looked at pretty many areas, we haven't looked at this. If this is what you want to continue and then, you know, show you who's being charged and what they're being charged and see if it needs reclassification. But I'd like to get a little more information for you before we discuss that.
We'll have those there. But I would ask, here, would it be okay to just make a couple of suggestions that we might have in, oh, we already have some.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
We can discuss that, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Well, my thought was on the back of this appendix or the facility rate under facilities, in particular, so all of these are per day, but what occurred to me is that for something like Easton Middle School Auditorium, for example, which is third from the bottom under that, so we think 100 or 200 dollars for the day, I mean theoretically someone could come in at 8:00 AM.
That's the cafeteria.
Oh, sorry.
200 or 1.
Oh, sorry, 200, 400, but for the day. But I, I sort of would like to recommend that we have a cap on the number of hours and then for each hour after, say three hours or something like that, for the hour. Seems like somebody could come in at 8:00 AM, stay till 10:00 PM, they'd still have the custodial charge, but you know, a couple hundred dollars would be an incredible rate if they decided to have an all-day event, for example. I'm just thinking that, you know, three hours might be a reasonable amount of time for most events, but then beyond that, I mean, even 20 dollars or something like that, I'm just an idea. And I sort of see the same thing for the cafeteria and for the Richardson Homestead cafeteria and also the lecture hall. Again, could be an all-day event, $100 is not much money for an all-day event, particularly for a, for a cockpit organization and the cafeteria at OA. So I'm just thinking, if we could have an hourly, I mean, I'd look at all of those. Oh, that's an idea.
Well, that's good that you mentioned it now because we'll do that with our thing and make sure everyone's.
It's definitely dark for hours, you know.
Right. Do we have anything? Do we have any benchmark information available on what, what other schools in the area charge for, maybe for the bigger, yeah, maybe for the bigger ones, just to make sure that we're.
We've always had hubs when we considered it, but it's been a few years since we've made that, you know, so we don't know if those have changed.
Yeah, yeah, maybe particularly, I'm thinking like Sooton High School where they have the brand that's really with probably more expenses, they've probably done this exercise, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Any more?
Okay, thanks. Discussion of capital improvement plan. Dr. Cabral.
So we have our capital plan available for you for possible votes and then we'll forward it on to the town. David is here now, Ellen is not here, but David's here and can we do that with you? We have attempted to align this more directly with the entire budget in terms of categorizing by need, where it is either strategic, proactive, or reactive. It fits perfectly also with facilities because if it's reactive, it's fixing an existing need where somebody could potentially be injured or there's a leak somewhere that's going to cause bodily damage, for example. Proactive would be an imminent need where we know it's wearing to a point that it's going to need to be replaced very soon and strategically be faced down the line, whether it is changing out systems or alternate cost efficiency, alternate energy savings, things like that. So David has created some copies for you, the yellow is, well, actually, Lee is right here, so I feel like we're talking about him. David, why don't you take them?
Yeah, so basically the, I think the focus, we can look at the bigger Excel spreadsheet, but I think the front page, the first page is probably the more important page because that's what we're going to request from the capital planning committee. But like Dr. Cabral said, we kind of use the same methodology that we've been using for the budget as far as whether something is strategic, long-term, proactive, or reactive. So we kind of color-coded these, so obviously the green is strategic, yellow is proactive. And it's right in the right-hand corner, it kind of gave you a little refer, a little box to refer to, and pink is reactive. So I'll just kind of go over the front page, which is what we're going to request for capital needs for FY '21. But as you can see, on the, on the bigger, on the other pages, it's kind of like, gives you a five-year projection. And I want to emphasize to you that this is what it looks like today, but next year something could, those, those items could all kind of move around, it all depends on if something breaks in another year, the other thing, if something may not even be on this list, but all of a sudden we have a boiler that breaks and now the DPW comes to me and says, geez, we got to upgrade this boiler, it's going to cost us $40,000. So that gets added to the list. So this is a kind of living, breathing document, it kind of changes, but it's a good roadmap to kind of give you some projections on, you know, just what our needs may possibly be in a few years. But with that, I'll just kind of briefly go through the front page, which is what we're going to request for FY '21 for our capital needs. So as you know, on the first one, we have the replacement of 23 carpets, classroom carpets. As you know, over the last several years, we've been replacing carpets over at Richardson Homestead. So we'd like to do 23 carpets for this upcoming year. I think we would still have like 10 or so carpets left to do in the building, but we'd like to get at least 23 of them done for this upcoming year. It would be done during the summertime. Also over at Richardson Homestead, as you noticed, a lot of these items are at Richardson Homestead and just so that you kind of put it in your, kind of in your brain as far as, you know, down the road, these buildings are starting to get old. So the high school is 12 years old, middle school's 12 years old. We're not having, like, knock on wood, we're not having major problems there, but you know, eight years from now, seven years from now, we may start, you'll see a lot of stuff from the high school. So this stuff, again, this is a living, breathing document that's going to be changing, but you know, right now Richardson Homestead, it's 20 years old now, so there are different things, mechanical systems and roofing, we just did a roof over there last year, you know, things are starting to break down. But it's not because it's not maintained, our DPW and our custodians do a fantastic job maintaining all our facilities, but it's just, you know, things get old and, just like your house, you have to replace them, so. So again, the second one is sprinkler heads. That's something that we could do in a phased project, but I think one of the problems with phasing that in and splitting it up is that we'd have warranty issues as far as, some of the sprinklers would be under warranty, then the other ones are on warranty the following year, so we kind of keep a track of them. The lifespan, similar thing, bidding, it's better to go up to bid for the whole project all at once, otherwise you're going to, you potentially, you get two separate vendors that are doing it, one year, one vendor, then the next year, another vendor. So I think it's better to just do it all at once, if we're going to do that at all. The sec, the third one is replacing rooftop units over at Richardson Homestead. Again, some of that mechanical equipment's starting to get old. We have approximately five rooftop units at the Richardson Homestead School. We put in, I talked to the DPW, they thought a good solid number, we work with Trane, which is a big rooftop unit provider. And we'd also have to get a crane, because these things are extremely heavy, you can't bring them up on an elevator, so we'd have to get a crane to crane them up, we'd have to rent that out. So we put in for $50,000 to replace too. This would be more of a proactive thing. The rooftop units aren't necessarily breaking right now, but you don't want to get into a situation where all of a sudden it breaks and now you're kind of scrambling and trying to get money and trying to get bids. So if you can do it in a proactive way and get pricing before they break on you, I think that's a good move. The next one, number four, is milling and repaving the Homestead Richardson parking lot. We work with the DPW, Jake Concepcion, we've got some numbers for us, it's $109,850. We do have a lot of potholes over at the Richardson Homestead parking lot, you know, that's a liability issue if somebody were to fall in a pothole and break their ankle, workman's compensation situation where somebody, one of the teachers falls or staff member and they get hurt. So I would actually think that's, you know, should be one of the priorities as far as making sure that gets done. So that's a reactive thing because that's actually happening right now, we have potholes in the parking lot, so this is, this would be reactive, to correct that problem. The next one is install cafeteria flooring at the high school. This would be, again, this would be a reactive thing because the current floor that's over at the high school, the upper level, we placed the lower level probably about four or five years ago, but the upper level, there's areas that are cracking and breaking apart and just doesn't look good. We have an awful lot of reference, a lot of the recitals, rent out the auditorium, but they also rent out the cafeteria. And I think we want to keep our facilities nice, so I think that, you know, this is something that would be a reactive thing, but I think it's something that we should, we should do. but I think it's something that we should, we should do. And that's $42,285. We actually did get a price from one of, from our vendor that we actually work very closely with. And the next one is, again, at Oliver Rains High School, it's glycol pumps. We have, actually, it's a very fortunate thing, we have glycol in our heating systems. And so that prevents us from having freeze-up. You see a lot of schools' systems are periodically, you have freeze-ups and it can be very costly as far as pipes break, we have univents that we have to repair, repairing walls, equipment could get damaged. So we need to purchase this glycol pumps that helps pump the glycol through the system. It also helps us during repairs too. So I talked to the DPW, they thought this would be a priority and this would be a reactive thing that we should get. Next is now the wastewater treatment plant. We're looking to purchase, replace the FET pumps, the raw storage pumps, and the NOXIC reduction drive. This is kind of a, basically, this started out, we were working on the capital, our capital request. I then met with Weston Sampson, who is a vendor who maintains the plant, which then triggered a meeting with Perkins Eastman, which is also involved with, you know, obviously, they're the architects for the new elementary school. So I didn't want to be purchasing or repairing things that perhaps may be repaired or purchased through the new elementary school project because the plant's probably going to need to be upgraded in order to take on another 800 or 900 students that will be in a new school. So we had a meeting with Weston and Sampson. They recommended these three items as something that we need. They're not broken now, but they said we're going to need those relatively soon. So they said, you know, you should probably get those in place in the short term, whereas the long term, we're working with Perkins Eastman on repairing some of those things and upgrading the system. So this would be about a $35,000 cost to purchase those three items for the wastewater treatment plant. And it's something that you definitely want to, you know, get them repaired because you don't have a situation where the wastewater treatment plant's not working, you could potentially have to cancel school because you can't take care of the storage. So it's definitely something that you need to do. And then the next two, I'm a little bit unsure, maybe Alicia and Chrissy might want to jump in. But this is a typical request for technology. John Souza put this request together. We have $139,852 for computers. And we're also looking at getting projectors for $45,190. And as you can see, the grand total for all of our capital requests, $620,717. And so we're going to be going, going in front of the capital planning committee, I believe, on February 4th. It's a seven o'clock meeting at Tom Hall. So if you approve this plan, this would be what's presented to the capital planning committee. Again, this front page's not going to change pretty much unless something dramatic happens over the next 10 or 14 days. But pretty much the other document with all the items listed and all the different colors, that is a living, breathing document that could potentially change, but it's a good starting point.
So, are you, okay.
The furniture.
What's that?
The furniture.
Oh, furniture for?
Yeah, so we have, we have $25,000, this needs to be increased by $25,000 because we have a furniture need. We are finding that a lot of the equipment is not suiting the children right now. We have some students who need to have higher furniture. We have some students need to have to have, it's called flexible seating for some of our students in our specialized programs. And so we have $25,000 request for furniture as well. That's a district-wide request.
Yeah, it's like, I think, which is referring to, that's like a placeholder? So it's in case we have to replace various types of furniture that's flexible and stuff. So we'll add it, so it'd actually be.
No, we're going to use, yeah, we're going to use the furniture money, yeah.
So I'd make it a $645,717.
And that's reactive also?
That's reactive.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Furniture, yes.
All right, I have two questions. First of all, and I know I've seen this before, but the initial inclusion date, so for example, the Homestead parking lot that's been on the capital budget list since 2014?
Yeah, so basically, as you can see on the left-hand column, you have like little codes that say RO, number 1, 2, 3, 4. Then it says DNW, that's Doran Whittier. So that was on the original Doran Whittier report, so it's just been kind of carried forward.
Okay. And then the other thing, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this, reconstruction of the basketball and tennis courts?
Okay, yeah, that's something that Bill requested. So about a couple of years ago, we actually did a small job over at the tennis courts. We, there was a bunch of cracks over there, so we hired a contract and they made a bunch of repairs. They actually also repainted the tennis courts. But what Bill's looking for here, this would be a total like reclamation of the tennis courts and basketball courts. And I think you could probably get CPA funds because I believe that recreational facilities are covered under the CPA policy or whatever. So I think we could potentially, you know, this is something that we wanted to do down the road. We could potentially go to the CPA and see if they would have fun. Oh, we could find it to the capital.
And right now, those are the original tennis courts and basketball courts from the high school.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
They might even be older than that.
Well, the tennis courts have had several repairs.
Repair.
I don't know about CPA funds for existing, like, repair. I'm not sure that that qualifies. I think it's really just new recreational. I could be wrong unless, but I think that is unfortunately only for new.
Wasn't CPA funds used in part for the field, for the turf?
That was, I think it's for new, I think it was for some new items though, like the new fencing and.
It was for the design.
Yeah, okay.
And I just wanted to add with the technology, we are maintaining our plan where we are only replacing and repairing what we currently have with this number. Any additions to our technology fleet is through donations only at this time. We do not have the capacity to do, to have that proactive approach in our budget right now, so it's purely reactive.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to point out that even though $645,000 seems like a lot of money, it's actually, if you look at the last 10 years of capital requests or at least approved capital requests by the schools, we've come in so much lower than barely the rest of the town. And when you consider that we provide direct services to, you know, 700 citizens for nine months a year, I think that we have really had very modest proposals in the past and had sort of modest funding. So I think that this is very reasonable compared to the past, you know, when you take it in the context of the past 10 years or so and what the schools have been able to achieve through capital.
Does some, the RO parking lot, is that just the space in front of the school or is it a?
There would only be the space in front for this.
Okay.
So what we could do potentially, again, is a living, breathing document. We could for next year or in the future, we could add that, the back, the playground type area.
Yeah, I know they, the ROPTA had hired, they fundraised and hired a consultant who put together a plan for proposed enhancements. And I think it was sort of tabled, not kind of knowing what was happening with the elementary school project. Didn't want to, you know, perform the big investment without kind of knowing if anything else, but, yeah.
Yeah, if they are interested in anything like that, they have to bring to the school community because you have to approve any manipulation to school property.
Yeah.
But what happens with potholes now? I mean, I'm assuming they are built in.
Well, they're, they're built in, it's not in shape. Not all.
Not all of them.
No.
They're, they're kind of cropping up.
I was going to say, it's like.
Well, especially this time, yes, it's the expansion and contraction.
Right.
Okay, thank you, David. Anybody else?
You guys want to make a motion to approve?
Oh, we have to, okay. Do I have that motion?
No.
Second. All those in favor? All right.
All right, thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you very much, David. Next up, vote to approve donation from ExxonMobil Educational Alliance for the M. Cabral.
Thank you. Tammy Hansen from a local ExxonMobil Hall Central office and said that they would like to donate $500 from their educational alliance program to the Easton Middle School. The educational alliance funds math and science programs that schools in need and this is, will be part of their ongoing efforts to support STEM education within the communities that they study. So we would like to accept that donation gratefully on behalf of the middle school to be used for STEM, science, technology, engineering, or math purposes.
Any questions or comments? Turn a motion?
A motion, okay. Second.
All those in favor? And thank you very much, ExxonMobil Educational Alliance. Awesome. All right, next up, discussion on the process of naming the new elementary school and possibly having a naming campaign. Do, Dr. Cabral, do you want to speak to this first or?
Well, this is the, it's an ongoing agenda I don't, I don't know if you have officially decided on the name of the new elementary school to give you the opportunity to share any information you may have received since last meeting or continue your discussion or do you have one other meeting that's your question?
Right, and at the last meeting, we talked about what a possible committee might look like with, you know, school committee, historic commission, historic society, who else? We had a bunch of people that, and principals of the three schools and parents and tax and all that kind of thing. We were talking about different people coming in on the, on the possible committee. And right now, so I told you that we already have heard about the Blanche Ames Group and the Mary Frothingham, Mary Frothingham Ames, oh, Mary Ames Frothingham.
Ames Frothingham.
Thank you. Then I heard about another Ames lady, and I forget who it is, but there's another one. And then I, and then I have another one that I'm not, I won't say who it is, but there's another person that wants to be, have the school named after this other person. So it's growing, but I did, I can't give away anything. I can't give away anything. But the other thing, I did speak with Mark Brockman, who was on the school committee when Homestead Richardson was named.
Richardson Homestead.
Richardson Homestead, sorry. It's just that alphabetical order thing.
No, it's so rigid.
Whatever, so, old. They did have the contest in the sixth, because at that time, it was four, five, six. And the sixth graders did have a contest and that's how it came up with Richardson and Homestead. And I don't think we can do that, I mean, I don't think you can ask a bunch of second graders to name a school. I don't know.
They're not in yet.
Yeah, exactly.
That would definitely be the little Ron James elementary school.
No, no, we're talking general.
Chong, maybe.
That's average. Top grade. With those elementarys.
So I do, but I really do believe that we need to get going on this, just like Dr. Cabral had said a couple of meetings ago, that if we have a name, it's named, and then we can move forward with bills and, and things on contracts and stuff like that. So, like, you know, your thoughts about making up a committee?
I wasn't here at the last meeting because I had an emergency, but it sounds like having a committee of too many people just makes it so complicated because then you need to find a time when most people can meet and then, you know, it just becomes this whole. I, I think that we should winnow, really, winnow down the number of people that we would consider being on a committee like this. I also want to, as I always do, emphasize that this is the school committee's decision. So, you know, there's always a little bit of a risk if you have a committee that only has, say, one school committee member on it that decides to put forward a proposal that the school committee, for whatever reason, doesn't support, that also creates a sort of tense situation within the town. So we have to, I think, try to make this a simple, fairly quick process that doesn't involve dozens of people. I really think that's, that's my personal recommendation, just based on sort of precedent where things like this can just drag on forever and it's really hard to reach a decision and things like that. So that, I don't know.
Do you have a suggestion on who would be part of the committee?
Well, I mean, I see historical society and I, you know, the truth is, all you have to do is post the meetings and you could have more than one school committee member on the committee. And in a way, if you had two or three school committee members on there, at least you would be able to report back to school committee right away. And you would also have a sort of consensus between or among those two or three people that would kind of wait the final decision in a way. So that you would, it's sort of a safeguard against having a group that for whatever reason emphasized one element or another of the decision-making process. By the way, I don't have any preference. I mean, I know about the three proposals so far, which is just Easton Early Elementary School, which is very simple and comprehensive, and then Mary Frothingham or Blanche Ames. I would have no objections to any of those names personally. So I'm not, I'm not, I don't have like an agenda here. I just don't want us to kind of create dissension in the community or whatever. And I think that's, it's difficult, but we have to do this carefully and in a way that we kind of protect the district and protect the school committee's final process. So I think historical society person makes sense, the three principals makes sense. I mean, just because they are coming together. Maybe the assistant superintendent and two or three school committee members. I don't know who else you talked about last week. I did listen to almost all the meeting, but I didn't listen to the whole discussion about the possible naming, so I don't know who all you call it. But, you know, when you have a committee of 30 people, I mean, there's a lot of research that shows the ideal committee size should be eight to 10 people because then it becomes, just any kind of decision becomes so unwieldy and kind of inefficient. That's just, you know, something I learned in graduate school. We see nothing to contradict that since then. But, so I just don't think it should be a huge, you know, because when you get, then there's so many people can't come and then you're like, what constitutes a quorum? And then, you know, we have to postpone it. I just think two meetings, discussion, something like that. Just my proposal, I know I'm being a little vocal here, but what else is there?
Michelle, you have some?
Well, yeah, but then I thought maybe twice about it. Another option, kind of between what you were saying and a contest, which I'm not sure that.
Oh, talk about little kids.
So maybe a night where we have a meeting and groups can come and present their idea for all of us.
At a regular school committee?
Well, I guess it would technically be a workshop if we made it just the topic of the night.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
But we made it in the evening so people could come. And then everybody presents at once and then we can have a discussion and go from there.
Okay.
It's just another option.
Yeah, and maybe kind of a long, kind of a hybrid, like if we have somebody from, I know you mentioned historical society, historical commission, or the private.
They are two separate.
Yeah, okay. I don't understand who's on what and what their different positions are, but I'm sure you will. I'm sure you do. So, yeah, so if we can figure out, you know, maybe, maybe have somebody from one or both of those groups join that meeting. Because I think it would be helpful to have somebody with some expertise, be able to sort of vet, just make sure that, you know, nobody suggests that we pick and it ends up being controversial and we want to work it.
So, yeah.
Could you do both, which is you form a subgroup? And the job of that subgroup is to hold that forum.
Yeah. And then actually, the whole school committee can go to the forum.
And the whole school, and then that way, the people who are interested in advocating and making their presentations are making that presentation to the subgroup or whatever committee that is going to be making the decision.
But they're not in this.
And I think.
Or, no, they're not.
Sorry, sorry.
Just a recommendation, making a recommendation.
And I think that's what, I think that's what Michelle is saying. We have a school committee meeting and, and the only item on the agenda is the president.
I'm not saying it would be a school committee meeting. I'm saying it would be a meeting of that commit. If you formed a committee that made, that included the assistant superintendent, a couple of school committee members, a member of the historical society and a couple of the principals, that's the committee that hosts that meeting where people can come in and present.
But I, but I'm kind of drawn to Michelle's idea without the committee because anybody then who's interested, I mean, we could make, have special invitations to people like a member of the historical society and the historical commission, probably have to do both.
Right.
You know, but, I mean, those people could be there. We could ask them to come to do a presentation or whatever, to be involved in sort of a, on-the-spot vetting of proposals. But I like the, I, I like your idea a lot of having the people who are advocating a particular name presenting to essentially the community. It could be the school, it could be at a school committee meeting that is held just for that purpose, but also you could have by invitation certain members of the community that felt would be able to provide, you know, information or context or whatever for any proposals. But because I, because the way you're, you're suggesting it, it's kind of a two-step. So then they're presenting to this group.
Well, it could be an open meeting.
Well, it could be an open meeting.
But then, anybody could come.
Right.
But then, what's that group doing? Going back and making a decision to recommend one name to us, because then that puts us in an awkward position if we aren't that comfortable. Whereas if, or you have the group have three school committee members, so then you have essentially a majority of the school committee on the, in the group. Because if it's an open meeting, you can do that, I mean, it doesn't matter how many school committee members are on. I don't know, I just, I just don't want this to become a sort of overkinds meeting. I think, and it has been amazing to me over the years how some seemingly sort of simple and innocent matters suddenly become subject of all sorts of back and forth. So, I'm just trying to make it as.
Simple as possible. Anybody else want to chime in?
I mean, I'm fine with the subcommittee, as long as we have a minimum of two members of the school committee on the meeting. It's also a clear message to the community that it is a decision of the school committee, so that you don't have people arguing with each other over, you know, advocating and what.
Well, that was why I suggested a workshop kind of, because then we're all there.
Yeah, well, it's just that, yeah, I mean, you called it a workshop, I agree.
Well, because it would be a workshop, that's right, so I would make it.
And a couple other.
We didn't get to, no, we had to change the name.
But a couple other groups that I had on my list with question marks, of course, we talked about this last time, do we want somebody from the select board, and do we want neighborhood, like somebody from the neighborhood?
But if it's for the whole.
They wanted to come make.
If it's an open meeting.
It's an open meeting, but, but I don't see, especially because it's like, the school is for the entire community, it's not for any, I mean, it's not for just the children listening.
Right, no, no, but I just meant, I don't know, for some reason I wrote that down, I don't know if somebody told me that or not, but.
But if it's an open meeting, anyone can come, we can notify the elected.
There would be a public, an opportunity for public to come and request.
Right, exactly. How, the Simmons Lecture Hall holds, what, 50, 75?
Seventy.
Seventy people? Because that's probably where we would hold it, I would say, right? Simmons Lecture Hall, right?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know.
And it would be a nighttime meeting.
Yeah, so everybody could come, okay.
Can you think of, that's big enough?
So, do you think that middle school auditorium or the away auditorium?
I think one of those might be better, just in case.
Okay. All right, let me check with Peggy and see what's, and then I'll check with you guys and see what is a good night to get together, okay? All right, so that's on my agenda.
We can just, yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
Just let us know if you want.
We have a tour, I'm assuming, a little bit huge. I suspect Simmons would be okay, but I agree with being cautious. So maybe by middle school.
Middle school.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, it's not overwhelming.
I just have to check, because I know they're in the middle of our performance. Go ahead, Jan.
The only thing I'm going to, not caution, but somehow we need to figure out how you're going to facilitate that meeting. Because if you have a, you know, if it's just come and tell us who you think, you don't want to get into a public debate about this person versus this person. You want a lot of groups to just make their presentation advocating for the person that they want, and that's it. Otherwise, it could get messy.
So maybe contacting the people that have messaged you about, and asked them to put together a proposal, and then, it could be just a question and answer.
Right.
And have Historical Society people to kind of be able to give any additional information that you think might be useful on the people that have been looking for.
Yeah.
And if somebody wanted to show up and advocate for a name you hadn't heard about, that's fine, you just.
They just have to have a presentation ready to go.
Right, so would it be good to get it out there? If you want to be part of this meeting, submit to contact you so that you can come on the agenda?
Sure, that's a good idea.
And then control a little bit, if I like.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and then presumably, you know, we could take in all of the information, and then we'd have a nice, lively discussion of the items that want to be. I mean, not at the same time necessarily, but.
So, yeah, that's.
But via mass email?
It's a mass email.
Your school committee.
Oh, to everybody. But, but in the town, but also you want the townspeople to know about it too. You don't want just schools. So I would send, I would send you something, an article, or a, just a blurb that you could put in the journal and the enterprise and online.
Yeah, and I could continue writing.
And you know, and I can also put it on Town Cryer too.
Right, Town Cryer.
With a deadline, yeah.
But I, I think Jan had just mentioned a press release, I mean, maybe we could do a press release for the schools, you know, just saying that there will be a special thing taking.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, we can send the information, actually, just give us the D and details.
Right, okay. I will definitely get work on that tomorrow.
Oh, good idea.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
No longer than five minutes. Five is a lot, five is a lot. But I mean, five is generous, three is okay.
Three to five, a maximum of five minutes.
Yeah, five is a lot. Well, you think it has to be much? I mean, I don't think we're going to have 50 people, I think we're going to have three or four.
I mean, just for them to hold up the things they talk about. Or, you don't even need to do it, you can wait until the deadline's up, see how many people you have, and then come back, contact them and say, these are the guidelines for your presentations.
And you could say up to five minutes, or maximum five minutes, but encourage a shorter presentation, or, well, it's a bit difficult to do five minutes. Yeah, no, you're right, five minutes is a long time to talk about one topic.
But if they're getting into the history of somebody or something, it might become a PowerPoint, it might become, like, if you're doing Blanche Ames, you might have a PowerPoint, you might be talking about the history and her contributions and everything she's done, so there might be easy to fill five minutes.
Yeah, I think up to five minutes. I mean, I agree it's long, but you're not, we're not expecting five minutes, so as Nancy said, three to five minutes, then you give people the option to.
One to five minutes.
Hundred seconds.
You have two seconds to say the name.
No.
Say the name and then note it.
I don't think we're going to.
Okay, so, all right, so I'll be getting back to you guys like by Monday at the latest about what day is good for everybody.
Okay, great.
Number nine, possible vote on changes to yardly rent agreement, Dr. Cabral.
So when you package, you have the, the contract that I've been asked to sign. I just wanted to bring to your attention and make sure that you're fine with the fact that you had voted on December 5th to accept the contract with a couple of specifications. One was that underneath number one, it's specified the season, and the years in number two was changed. So, the draft has been reviewed, and this is what was presented to us. Connor Reed suggested the dates that had been put in there to be a certain date instead of the first frost, that's what we had talked about.
But this date.
But this actual name, so it was, it was to begin in January, and now it's November. So, now underneath number two, the difference here is instead of January, March, it's November to March. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and if you're fine with that, I can sign it or.
There, well, there's a couple of.
There's the 15th to November.
Yeah, it's, instead of January, it's November.
So in paragraph seven under release, like halfway down, the sentence says, "The licensee further agrees to reimburse the town for damage to its property." Now, unless I'm wrong, this is now excluding normal where the rent itself resulted from typical use. That sent, that part of the sentence was not in the draft I had from the last one. Unless I'm looking at the old draft.
What would you want of a difference?
No, no, I just, I just want to make sure wherever there have been changes, that we are aware of them, so.
Okay.
And then there was another one, what was it? On the conditions of use, there was a condition that was deleted. So on Exhibit A, conditions of use, so it goes, the sponsoring organization, it's like towards the bottom, the sponsoring organization must take responsibility. So, and then on the new contract, it goes right to during school session, but in the last contract, there was a bullet that said, "No individual will be admitted to the facility before the arrival of an adult supervisor who must be 21 years of age, and no individual may remain at the facility without such supervision." Custodians have been given special instructions to strictly reinforce this regulation. Is there a reason that was deleted?
I'm not aware of a reason that that would be deleted.
Okay.
No, I think that's an important thing to have.
Okay.
I think somebody just missed it when they were reading, when they got the.
No, no one has brought to my attention that that was an issue, and that they wanted that deleted for a particular reason.
I actually remember when we had these discussions, whenever it was, that was something that the group was, was upset about.
Yeah, they felt it was a lot of, it was a sort of high demand for them.
Right.
And I didn't remember this was 21, because I thought it was 18, but I do remember, no, I didn't.
Yeah, 21 seems, little.
Eighteen.
I thought, yeah, I don't remember what it was.
Eighteen seems reasonable.
Yeah, eighteen seems reasonable, because you'd have.
I know, it's, you know, yeah, young adults who go state.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, I just, I just didn't know if there was a reason that it didn't get deleted.
I mean, maybe it was because they objected to it, but that.
But it was in the, it was in the contract that we voted on last time, that's why I learned, that's why I have it.
But who, who put this together, this actual document?
This was given to me by the town district.
Okay, so I'm wondering if the.
Maybe you're not.
Maybe last time, like, kind of advocated to have that moved, but I think it would have been important to draw our attention to that if that's the case.
Oh, that's all that particular. Now, I just want to go back to the one that you had mentioned, do I have to make sure that there wasn't something that should be changed on that?
I, I don't.
I think it's fine.
It's, I think, I mean, I think it, I, it would be, I would, any change that had been made from last time to this time, I would just want to make sure that town council has seen those changes and approves those changes.
Okay, but for the purposes of the school committee, that's fine?
I don't see a problem with it.
Okay.
You know, I have to say, I'm a little thing, like, word, word last time, I'm not sure we did that past carefully, the first contract, and then kept coming across this term material man, which I guess is like suppliers, right? But it's just such an antiquated. I mean, it's just, but really, you couldn't say suppliers? It's like manning booth, except you say staffing booth.
So do you want.
But, so on number seven, what you were just talking about, and then you go to the last page, the very back, third bullet down, the applicant will be responsible to reimburse the school department for any costs incurred for damages to the building or parking lot, and then the other, the one on number seven, further agrees to reimburse the town for damage to property, and that's, that must just be the rent part of it, right? So one's the rent and one's the school.
Is there damage other than normal wear?
Okay, okay. All right.
I don't have an objection to the thing that you were thinking to at all for that first thing, but I do think we should look into the adult being present, looking at the.
What about the dates starting in November?
Why did they remove that back to November, do you know?
Uh, I think they want it to be at the first frost, and that would be before January.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, if the law is frozen, then it's one pressure.
Okay, so, so did you want to vote on the contract with the understanding that the bullet that was removed would be reinstated at 18 years old instead of 21, am I hearing that correctly?
So.
Well, I didn't make a motion.
But, but if he should say. In motion, so.
There's a problem if they took that for a reason, so they can just let us know.
All those in favor?
Yes, thank you.
Did you get all that? Thanks. Okay, January 1st enrollment, Dr. Cabral.
Sorry, I do have one I need to do for that, sorry. This is just number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Number 10 is just, once you agree on the contract, you have a problem with me signing successor agreement if there are no changes, but bring it to you if there are changes.
That's fine, so, I move that the superintendent can sign a contract, it's similar yardly rent contract.
Seven.
All those in favor? Okay, all right, January 1st enrollment.
So, these are the enrollment figures presented from January 1st compared to January 1st of 2018 and 2017. Uh, I'm sorry, 2019, 2018, we are in 2020. As you can see, it is set up in the way that you have usually received it with tweaks over the years to, to make it more convenient for you. If you have any questions, please let me know. We do not see a huge needle movement anywhere. What I've encouraged you to do in the past, is we look at, for example, starting with Cane Barton in FY 18, where it's 241, and then you follow it over to the left column, but one down, so it's 238, and then 241. It shows you that cohort moving through. And so you can see, if you do that all the way down, there really are no marked changes other than the typical eighth to ninth grade, which is a little bit more, but not any more than in past years. And that's been under 20 traditionally, and then typically within the grades, it's at about five.
And then homeschooling was a lot, too.
We have, that's homeschooling with IEDPs, not homeschooling. We have about 30 students who are being homeschooled, and that's been pretty, pretty consistent inside the year. I'm sorry, were you going to ask a question?
Right, what's that, you asked the difference between, so homeschooling with IEDPs, I just was interested in that, I didn't realize that, I mean, it seems like the school's involvement would be much more extensive than in that instance, where the child is on an IEDP, but they're still home schooled.
Yeah, absolutely, so, but by, you know, it's a state mandate that we are to provide special education students, uh, special education to students who are determined, if a homeschool family asks us to do a determination on a student, we do that meeting, and if there is found to be special education needs, we do provide those services to, of course, residents of Easton. Chrissy, or whoever the assistant superintendent is, it was me in the past, is extremely involved with all of these families, they go forward a plan for the beginning of the year, they have to be approved by the assistant superintendent, at the end of the year, they have to show evidence of growth, which also has to be accepted by the superintendent, and then many of our families just continue the year after, yes. But we have a very big relationship with our homeschool families.
Yeah, I saw the virtual cat abuse up a little bit, is that interesting, too?
Uh, that's not surprising, only because they tend to be able to support populations that we're seeing growing in our own schools, those students who are medically fragile, or students who have social emotional means, or fear of entering school, so forth, so that's not surprising. It's a little surprising it's not higher, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I actually, but I kind of thought that I made perfect sense, given the, the uptick that we've seen and those issues, yeah.
Any other questions or comments about the enrollment? Okay, thank you. Next, discussion of posting, of posting the school committee policies.
So we have a school committee, subcommittee, four policies. Group has been working very hard, we had school committee members working on it prior, we had legal counsel review it, we had NASA Association of Schools, uh, Schools Committee review it.
Oh, no, it gets me the.
And so, it is, as you know, subcommittee members, it is a very labor-intensive and time-consuming process. You have to really look over laws, you have to look over if anything conflicts with other policies and so forth, it's quite a lot of reading, quite a lot of work. Because it is taking a long time, we did remove it from the school's website while it was being completed. However, I, I inquired about whether, now that it's taking a long time, if that really is the best approach, because our policy is available, really, people come and ask for it, which is not the most user-friendly approach. So, we were advised that it is probably better to have our current policies, because they are our current policies, whether they're posted or not, that is our current policy, to have them posted in their current form with a disclaimer that we are working on them, and then as they are updated, we're going to be adding them to what you already have. Every policy in the manual has the date that it was adopted, so people will be able to see if it's aged or not, but as you work on them and as you approve them, they can be updated all along. That way, it just becomes a more accurate document over time, and that way, people that are looking for information can, because that really is the purpose of the policy, to be accessible to everyone. So, I would like to know if we can follow that guidance, if it's okay with you, if we upload. if we upload the school policy again to the, the website, it will be dated, and some things are being worked on right now, but we will have something that explains that to people already.
I think. We'll get through it.
Yeah, we will.
Oh, man, and then when you have eight of them that are all the same, just different letters, oh my gosh. I think that's great, yes.
Oh, that's a good question, are they, you took it off?
Okay. The question was, isn't it on the mask website? We took it off because we were not able to update anything, and we didn't want to have that there conflicting with updating once we have an update.
Everybody's good, any questions? Okay. Public comment? Okay. Superintendent notes.
Two items only, I believe. First, we did receive some preliminary numbers from the governor's office on the budget next year. Nothing was a surprise to us. We did not receive a huge uptick in foundation funds, we did not receive any relief from charter schools. Actually, I guess I can't say any relief, but the charter school assessment last year was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and this year was four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, there was an eight thousand dollar relief. However, the school choice increased by twenty thousand dollars. So, once again, we, that's not only negated, but we are starting backwards with that. Uh, there was a modest increase of one percent, uh, and I think two point, I don't know exactly, I don't know, just over two percent to the unrestricted government aid. So, we certainly were hoping for better, even with a dire outlook, we were hoping for better. So, the town and the school together will be struggling with that again this year. Again, it needs to go through the senate and the house, and that's the governor, so there would be a lot of iterations, but it is typically a pretty good determination of where we're to be. Uh, in addition to that, um, the town also did receive a national award for our combined efforts on the budget last year, we did put out a press release about that. We ironically, as the town administrator agrees, did an exemplary job of explaining how little we have.
Which came with my certificate.
No dollars.
So, um, you know, there are a lot of factors that are involved in that, in terms of transparency and communication, and ease of accessibility and understanding and so forth, so it's part of that article, if you'd like to take a look at that. Certainly, we're very happy that that has been found to be a quality document that is clear to people, but it does reflect the budget that we have accurately. And finally, we have scheduled some students that we had last year as well, not the same students, but from the same school, and she died in China, visiting the Easton Middle School. Because of the recent outbreak of the coronavirus in the country, while the Wuhan area is not, it's about ten hour distance from the area we're talking about, we are considering what we're going to do about that, and we will make a decision no later than Monday morning, which is Monday night in China, about whether we will still have those students coming around. We're talking to another district that also has students coming from there, and so, we just want to make sure we talk to all the appropriate people involved, and inform everyone at the same time, which will be no later than Monday morning.
When will they do the order again?
February. February second, third, sorry. February, third, there. February second, yeah, February second to eight.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Assistant superintendent's notes.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Yesterday, I was at the mid-year, the, the winter MASSS meeting, um, out in Marlborough, and the commissioner, commissioner Riley spoke, um, shared some information about the Student Opportunity Act. If you are not aware, Easton is one of, actually, many districts that are receiving minimal funding. So, there are actually, um, he shared with us that there are thirty-five districts getting eighty-five percent of the money.
So.
Like two sixty-one, right?
Correct. So, um, with that being said, part of the law requires every district to create a plan with what they're going to do with the additional funding, and we also have to pick off of a menu of options. So, um, there, the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, will be posting templates and guiding documents next week for us to look at. So, we will be creating a plan with what to do with the four dollars that we get from them. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But, but, uh, but it, the important thing for all of you to know is that the plan will need to be approved by school committee, um, before we submit it to commissioner Riley. He suggested that the approval of the plan occur in March, uh, for how we're using the money, and we need to send it to him by April first, April Fool's Day.
I have a question, is this, so, we've always done, if we're minimum age, the district are just getting what every other, or no matter what, every district is getting at least that. So, why would we spend this money in some sort of unusual way, when it's really going to not even buy the strand water?
Correct, and, and it's, it's, um, the, because, so, there are two, there are, so, to kind of answer your question, not answering it, is that there are two forms that will, that every district will need to, every district will need to complete one of the two forms. There's a short form and a long form, and because we are receiving under one point five million dollars, and we are receiving way less than that, um, we are, we will be receiving the, um, short form to fill out, and commissioner Riley promised us that it will be no more than two pages to complete, so.
Two, one sentence.
Exactly, and the other thing, too, that is of concern, is that he will be putting out, DESI will be putting out to the towns, um, the strong, uh, what did he, what term did he use? I, I can't find it, but he, he, putting out a notice to the municipalities to keep the money with the kids, because it doesn't come to us directly, it goes to the towns. And so, that is a concern that many of the districts are, are having, is that the, the schools will actually not even see the money. So, um, so they will be putting out a notice to the municipalities.
Actually apply to us?
Right.
Because we are not getting money.
But essentially, if you were a district that was getting money, what the town could do is choose to not provide as much towards your budget as they have in the past, with the hope that you've made it up. So, you haven't really gained any money.
So, they can, they can add that into the percentage increase that we're getting. Um, so, that's, that's that, I always come up, great news, right?
I know, you're going to gymnastics for class, though.
Yeah, here is actually, um, great news, is that next, um, at the next meeting, Mr. Gottsel's Law and Legal Class, System Class, will be presenting for your approval the creation of an outdoor classroom at the high school. The students in his law class wanted to contribute to the school in order, in order to support the rise in mental health needs. So, they have a plan of how the cost, there will be no cost, um, they present it to me, and, um, we will be sharing with you what their proposal is, and it's, it's very exciting, so I'm excited to share that with you. And then lastly, since the last time we met, the Easton Public Schools Equity Series, sponsored through Easton University, Jimmy Cassis. Jimmy Cassis spoke to our staff and community, highlighting social and community cultures, and the importance of understanding that everyone wants to be excellent. Jimmy Cassis was very well received by those that attended, um, we actually had some people from outside the district attend, and were very enthusiastic about what we are doing here in the Easton Public Schools. Joanna Silverman will be coming on March fourth, and she will be conducting separate sessions for staff and the community on working with students and children of, with social deficits. More information to come on that, and like, before registration is preferred, but it's not required. And that's all I have for this time.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, school committee notes.
I'll just mention, I, I think Chrissy, you can probably comment better on this. We were at the Raising Multicultural Kids meeting this week, and there was, um, Latisha, what was her last name?
Oh, I just know Latisha.
Oh, my God, I just love her.
I have her.
She was a, okay, Stonehill, who is the head of their, it's like a multifaceted committee that has deals with diversity and international students and all of it. But she really did a wonderful presentation about, I'd say primarily how hard it is to discuss race among multigracial or multicultural groups particularly, but even within groups. And it was really a fascinating take, I felt, on how complex this is, and how even more complex it is to help children kind of navigate that path toward, you know, an inclusive society. So, it was really a good, um, she, she, it was a wonderful presentation, I wish more people had been able to attend. But she is, I think, going to try to partner quite a bit with the schools, and she, she really indicated a willingness to work with Easton Public Schools on some of these things, and I think she'd be a wonderful asset.
Yeah, I was, I'm going to reach out to her to, um, do a workshop for our teachers through Easton University, and the, the good thing about her is she's been in the position for seven months. She moved here from Brooklyn, and, um, she, uh, lives on the Stonehill campus. So, it's right now, so it's nice because she's very accessible to us, very easy for her to get here. She just has such a calm demeanor about her when she talks about race, it's very nice.
And just how complicated, you know, those discussions are, it's really, really good.
Anything else for you, you're all set? All right. Michelle?
Well, topic that came up at an HRC meeting, and I know that I gave them my input, but I said I would bring it up. There's a concern with the members of that committee, of a lot of things that are going on, mostly in Facebook, but could be in the schools or whatnot. And how, how to address that on social media, and how to report it, and who to report it to when they see things or hear things. What they were proposing was that as they see it happening, that somebody jumps into Facebook and says, this is our district policy, you need to report P D or whatever. And I've mentioned that we kind of had a no comment policy across the district.
Do, do you mean like, you know, examples of like, what kind of discussion you're talking about?
This was a general discussion. I don't want to get into a specific child or whatever.
No, no, that, but just, are they seeing like, is it kind of like student-student communication, or is somebody posting something on like a, your personal Facebook page or school?
So, I think that there's a whole variety of things that they would like to address, at least this is my understanding.
Sure.
Was that it was some, um, personal pages, it might be some of the group pages, it might be things that they heard had happened, and how do we get the message out to families about how do you address that, who do you report it to? There was a feeling that, um, some things had gotten reported at some point, and they'll end up here. I had mentioned it at like open house or back to school night or whatever, um, that principals address that with the parents that are there, because this is our policy, this is how we want you to handle it. And then we kind of all stay out of it, as, as we see it happening. They're wondering if it can be posted somehow on Facebook, or families reminded, or... They didn't really have a plan that they were proposing, they had a concern.
Could this be something that comes out in like the principal's newsletter, or like just every month, something like that?
Well, we actually, I'm the one that by meeting I attended, I remember this was basically the main topic. And I do think that. Right, sorry. Uh, to the advisory committee, but yeah, that's another thing we should probably talk about, I'm going to start rotating, but anyway, um, but I think that at that time, we did kind of make a commitment to try to develop some sort of, um, informational sheet for parents that would be either posted on our page, or we did talk about that, and I think it's just that so many things happened right after that, we probably didn't have a chance to kind of go back and look at that.
Oh, so, yes, did you actually post that? Because I, I wasn't aware, because I don't often see the in-house, I mean, now I'm getting some of the information that I've got for years, because my child already grad, children already graduated, but, um, so there was something that was. No, that's not my, my, sorry. So, there, I, I, I'm, I think I'm hearing a couple of different issues here. One, to get to Caroline's point, you know that two of my goals are based on reaching out to the community about communication. One is specifically about appropriate use of social media. So, we just had a meeting with the superintendent advisory committee this week, and we did talk about what we have been working on, which is a campaign for parents, students, and the community. These things do not, I don't write them myself, nor should I, they take a little bit of time. There is a human rights committee member on that, and one attends every single meeting, so I know. And there was someone at it, so I know that they know we're working on this.
She was actually the most vocal at this meeting, I don't know your meeting was since we had not.
Was it Wednesday?
We met, um, on.
Oh.
Tuesday.
Tuesdays. You just had a meeting on Tuesday, when was your meeting? Last week?
Couple weeks ago.
Okay.
So, we met on Tuesday, and, um, and we are working on a plan for that. It does take a little bit of time, however. Um, I, I'm not sure that I would suggest people jump in on people's personal Facebook pages. We are actually, you know, this is extremely complex, and we've put an awful lot of thought into this. And we're educators, so we look at it from an educational perspective, and what's best for our kids, and what's best for our kids to see adults doing. And I think if they see adults sort of, um, not attacking, but calling each other out on Facebook, that is not, that is not how you solve problems like this effectively. What we're trying to work on is a positive campaign. We're trying to work on a hashtag where we remind people about social media courtesy, so that our children can see that we really are trying to be more cognizant of how we leave our digital footprint. When it comes to people's personal Facebook pages, honestly, I think people should be, grown adults should not follow people who post negative things, and they should teach their children not to follow people who post negative things. We do not have, the school department, the police, we do not have control over what people write on Facebook. The only thing we can potentially control is how we educate people about what they're posting and the effect that it has on other human beings. We're trying to teach our children that in school right now. We really aren't the educators of the community and parents, we both strongly that we need to share that information as much to our youngsters. And so, we're working on a positive campaign about how to address that. We've worked very hard, as you know, on the language of our strategic plan and our core values, and we're launching that company, a campaign right now, and sharing, I send that to the entire superintendent advisory committee, so they can share that with all of their subgroups, we're making a culture for the schools. The schools have already embedded a lot of this language into some of the activities they're doing. You go into some schools, you will see the language posted about what we believe are our core values and our belief statements, and how we compose ourselves appropriately. You know, having been an educator for thirty years, you rarely solve a problem by curing the aggressor. It just, it doesn't happen. You help them and you support them the best way that you can. But it's educating all of those around that person and helping them to control how they respond or react to someone like that. And so that is the comprehensive approach we are choosing to take right now. I don't think coming up with a sentence that you can on that says, "Contact this person." Because this is the problem. The protocol already exists. I can tell you that even at that meeting, and not at any other meeting that we've had, and certainly not on my phone or my email or any of the multiple ways people can get in touch with me because I'm here until all hours of the night and every single weekend, no one has ever contacted me to say that someone had a problem with something on Facebook. So that just tells me that the protocol in place has not even been honored. So for, to say that it fell on deaf ears, first of all...
It wasn't trapped at you.
We're not, no, what I'm saying, I'm kidding. It couldn't have been because I'm tired of it, it stuns me. What I'm saying is if it fell on deaf ears somewhere before me, first of all, we are bound by law not to disclose what happens in terms of discipline for anyone who's a minor in our school department. We try to explain that to people. They don't like that information, but it is the law and we do not have authority over that. So it may not have been disclosed to them what happened, but that doesn't mean anything didn't happen. If they feel as though they were not heard, they're, they're like any other organization in our country. They are supposed to go to the next level of authority. So I can tell you that if they felt something was on deaf ears, they never followed that protocol. So to go to the school committee and ask you to post something, should you do something like that, we are subverting our own system of authority. You certainly can if you choose to, but we are not ignoring this matter. We have several things in place. We're working on it quite aggressively. I am respecting the superintendent advisory committee who's made up of subgroups from, I don't even know how many different groups in town, including the human rights committee. And, and we are pushing some of this information out. But if anybody were to direct anyone, if somebody, if an individual feels or even an organization feels specifically compelled to reach out to someone who's posting something they find unsavory, they should be prompting them to follow the protocols that are in place because I can tell you that they have not.
And I did explain that.
No.
I also said that I would bring it back.
Well, it's, that group is, you know, obviously it's a focus for that group. And sometimes when I was on that committee, I find that, you know, a lot of what was discussed were things of, what you said, "I heard this happened, I heard that happened, and I saw on Facebook," and things like that. And again, it was, first of all, we talk about this all the time. When a seven-year-old child goes home and is upset and says, "Oh, the teacher was really mean to me today," or whatever. And you know, the first thing the mom does is hop on Facebook. And then there are 43 comments about, "Your child's going to be in therapy forever." And I'm sorry, I'm sounding a little sarcastic, but it really is kind of at that level. The person never made an attempt to go talk to the teacher, who might explain that the child simply misconstrued something that she said or did, which often happens with children. You know, they just hop on Facebook and then because we're so drawn, our brains are so drawn to something that might be a little bit shocking or, and sort of negative, people just hop right on board. You know, instead of, I mean, Jen is a person that occasionally does post. And she's always that person who sits back and says, "Well, did you think about it this way?" I mean, it's great, but she is a rare bird in my opinion when it comes to Facebook posts.
And I don't do it anymore.
I'm not even talking about, you know, necessarily school stuff. But in the past, though, you just had these incredibly thoughtful but just encouraging people to look into it, to get the answers to their questions. Don't just hop up on Facebook on the basis of something your child, who by the way, might have been a little naughty today and maybe in fact wanted to cover up that fact. Okay, I'm not going to denigrate you. You said it was recent, but seriously, it's, and not to make a joke out of it, but it's very frustrating that people take this information, which often is completely misunderstood, and then get on Facebook and suddenly 93 comments later, no one in the school system knows about it. And the idea that we would be calling the superintendent or the superintendent of the system to pretend everything and say, "Well, you know, you might want to know about this Facebook post." We, we don't have the resources to cover social media, Twitter and Facebook and all these other, you know, entities. Now we have TikTok to watch, but, you know, but seriously, it's just ludicrous to think that we could keep track of all that.
Can I ask? The middle of the menu is military advantage. And Michelle, can I ask, without disclosing anything, is sort of the scenario that Cameron was talking about, is that the sort of thing that they were concerned about? Or is it more, you know, students or members of the school community personally attacking or denigrating or, you know, spreading rumors or whatever?
It was, it was just, it was a huge amount.
Yeah.
It's like, there's just another way that we can monitor that.
Yeah.
Well, something that comes up in that Raising Multicultural Kids meeting too is that kids sometimes are subjected to really awful, you know, name-calling, all sorts of things based on race, religion, other factors, you know, LGBT community in particular. We've talked about that and that's a sort of, again, that's something that should be brought to attention in the administration. But what we've talked about in that meeting is that a lot of kids don't want their parents to report it to them because they feel like that will further single them out, further, you know, isolate them or whatever. So that's, and that's like a huge issue that we're well aware of. We are well aware that there are awful things going on everywhere, certainly in our schools and every other school. But again, if the child doesn't report it to the parent and the parent doesn't report it or reports to the parent, but says, "Please, please, please don't say anything to anyone." I still think that the parent needs to at least inform the administration so that we can continue our efforts, which are ongoing and constant, to try to address issues around, you know, racism and other kinds of bias. I mean, it's, I just don't, this idea that we can somehow instantly respond to incidents that are occurring that we don't even know about, it's just such a stretch. I mean, they're very well-meaning, it's a wonderful group of people, and they do hear things that probably people here, they're on the human rights committee, they'll say, you know, "This happened to my child, I mean, gave his child," whatever. And it could be something truly outrageous, but if we don't know about it, we can't do anything. And even if we do know about it, we can't address all the ills of society in a month. It's just, it's just a constant, ongoing effort.
We have, we have provided training for staff, training for students that is ongoing about cybersecurity and responsible use of social media. We have, and multiple types. And it's ongoing, as I said. We have our principals respond to every single thing that is reported to them. They work in conjunction with the school resource officer. He has been involved in school-level issues of that nature very often. And so it is definitely, it does not fall on deaf ears, to my knowledge. If somebody feels that that is true, they really need to let us know. It's really, it's impossible for us to do anything, we don't know. We have, as I said, we've got our, so when I say things like we have the core values and we talk about our social competency programs in school and all of these things, ADL, all of, all of the resources we're providing are to help our children and hopefully as an extension in greater community, have a different lens when they are looking at people who are different than them and thereby not being, not feeling as though they would ever comment like that verbally and certainly not on social media. We don't feel that the solution to the problem is surfing social media and very generally commenting on this topic. We have to go to a group of the problem, which is implicit bias, a lack of understanding, a lack of empathy, and really teach that. And it does take a little while. And we are very working extremely aggressively on it, literally quickly, well. Working on it in curriculum, working on it through social competency work, working on it in modeling and mentoring students. We could model the most professional behavior in hosting as a staff. So yes, we have explicit conversations about the use of social media, but there's so much more involved that isn't explicitly about social media but is a means to work on that problem and those behaviors that are in the loop of why someone would have posted it in the first place.
I wonder if there's a way to maybe call out and amplify, maybe on the website, say something that's easy for people to find, that information that does get shared back-to-school night as to what the protocol is, so that it's somewhere that's, that's pretty visible so that if there is somebody who...
On the same page.
Yeah. So if there is an instance, right, you're in one of, like, one of the public pages, something brews and somebody who does happen, and, you know, again, not, not any of us being ambassadors, but, you know, somebody who's informed, did kind of involve them with the community and say, "Hey, you know what? The place for this is really, you should really follow this. Here's a quick link, there's the protocol right there." So that we can just, you know, have people kind of educating each other. It's just we, you know, as we did, you know, during a lot of the, you know, any of the, the school building campaigns and when we're talking about budget and whatever, there are definitely really involved members of the community who are happy to provide the link to, "Here's a good source of information for you to figure out what to do. Maybe let's, let's take it out of this page that has 3,000 people and, you know, go here, here's a quick reminder."
We, we could have a link of some sort, but to be honest with you, Jen, it's the same protocol for everything.
Yep.
If you have a problem with your child's grade.
Yep.
If you have a problem with the bus pickup.
Yep.
If you have a problem with a social media proposal, you follow the hierarchy.
Yep.
And it's just the same that would be in any organization. You would not call the CEO of Sears if you're a student marketing.
Yep. Like some people...
Some people, you know what?
Some people will take to Twitter before they'll...
They'll do that, right. Right. But that doesn't mean the president responds.
Right.
To be perfectly honest, the president wouldn't be the most helpful person.
A hundred percent, yeah.
And I might be the superintendent, but I am not the most helpful person if there is something going on between two students.
Yep.
I may not know the two students, I may not have, I don't have day-to-day contact with them. I can't easily, I don't have a relationship necessarily that I know that there's a certain trigger for a certain student that I could help them. It's not the appropriate route for a host of reasons. Not because I'm not interested, just because I'm not the best-equipped person to handle a situation. However, I do handle administrative negligence. And if somebody feels that it gets to the level of an administrator having a deaf ear or not following through or, or not being responsive or being neglectful of their child, that is why I have a full-time job, is because that's the stuff I, I handle. If, if they have followed that protocol and that's the situation, I'm saying I want them to call me because I can help them with that. But anything before that, I'm not, it's not the most efficient way. I want them to have an expedited solution that is to their satisfaction as much as they do. And that, that won't happen by me posting something on Facebook or I, I won't be able to help them. It's not efficient, yeah.
Yeah, but I do, I think there are parents who truly, they, something happens on the bus. Do I call the bus company? Do I tell the teacher? Do I tell the principal? They don't know. There are a lot of parents who truly, it's like if something happens in the classroom, okay, that's clear to go to the teacher. But I think there are other areas where, where people don't, people might think, "Well, well, my teacher's not the bus driver, so they wouldn't know, so do I, who do I talk to?"
You know what I mean? You can always go to the teacher.
They don't want to bother the teacher.
We're here to help the students. And if there's an issue on the bus, for example, we want to know. So they can go to the teacher about anything.
Yeah.
And they will direct them to the appropriate sources, no problem. I mean, we can have something like that, but it will literally...
Yeah, I think just, honestly, just a simple infographic of, "Here's the hierarchy, start here." You know?
Maybe.
Not something to dedicate a ton of resources to, but we have it.
Well, we have it, it's our hierarchy of our staff. We just post it on there.
Yeah.
But is it, is it posted with, with a notation that if you have a concern or a question, this is the hierarchy that you follow? And who's the people that you contact in this order? I mean, I, I, I know that it's on the website.
No, I'm saying we have the chart already. We wouldn't need to invest time in it. We have a hierarchy for our system.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I think if that were just somewhere on the district website that was, you know, kind of visible and not very good, you know, 500 clicks to get there or wherever it is, then that just might be a helpful resource, it's a suggestion.
But to, Michelle...
No, it's fine.
Well, but Michelle, you mentioned something else, which I, I think, I know Jane and I've talked about this kind of thing. Yeah, I can. The problem with having someone post, you know, this is giving people information, however helpful that could theoretically be, it also opens up often this idea that, "Oh, now I'm gonna, this is gonna be my new go-to person, this school committee member. And I'm gonna have this back and forth with them all the time. And I'm gonna have this sort of special relationship where I show the rest of the world that I have this, you know, relationship with the school committee member. So now you all should go to that school committee member when you want to." You know, so I think it just gets out of control. Plus, you know, any of us, I mean, I often don't, even sometimes when I really want to respond to, to post, I think I may not have enough information to respond accurately. So the last thing I want to do is make the situation worse by potentially giving, you know, some good information, but some that may not actually be so good.
Or putting, giving some information and then turning it off, going away and somebody's responding to what you put and they're, and then you're not responding and they think...
Then they're mad at you.
Yeah, which is...
Or they just think that, you know, but we should say, "Caroline, oh, you told me."
Always use mining, that is correct. But no, I'm glad you brought this to, I mean, we kind of all know about it, but something that we probably should revisit regularly because it's certainly an ongoing problem.
And, and like we should say, we did have a superintendent advisory meeting this past week. And, and it was really, it is seeing the perspective of all these different groups and different people and, you know, and this is, not that it's new territory, but it's new territory. It's, you know, you think about the time of technology and what's different now than it was 10 years ago. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right, Nancy, you opened the door.
To what? Well, and speaking of that, just so everyone knows, next meeting and furthermore, we will be on Facebook Live. We are not on Facebook Live today, but we will be from now on, just so you all know.
You mean all the school committees? Oh, okay.
Apparently what...
Meeting where you have that school planning.
School planning was on Facebook Live, if you didn't know.
We didn't know.
But, but we wouldn't let them do it today, but we will, so from now on, it's Facebook Live. Okay, go ahead.
No, well, when we first talked about the, having a school committee member, we...
We can comment.
Right.
We talked about rotating everybody.
Rotating, right.
So, and I know you, you asked me to do it once because you're working around, and then I think I asked...
Michelle, not once.
You weren't working around. But I think it, we should maybe plan a schedule where we are truly rotating.
Sure.
Everybody has a chance to do it, because you haven't had a chance yet.
I really enjoyed it.
What date?
So neither Jackie nor...
I'll have to look at what the next one, and we did make a date for the next one, so. But it, and you know what? It's, it's a really interesting committee. It's, the people are very, very nice, so.
It would also be, because like what you just said about what you're working on in this committee, that was really helpful to know. So if we could, whoever's on the committee, if they can, if the next school committee after just give us a little report about what was discussed, I think that would be really helpful.
Sure.
But we kind of discussed what we did.
Yeah, no, that was, that was great.
Could you put after each superintendent advisory committee, the next school committee? Could you put superintendent advisory committee?
On the agenda.
Be agreed for...
Yes, I like that word, "deprived."
We don't have the dates, but maybe we could, if you have the dates in advance or at least have an order, that people would be attending the meetings so that we're truly rotating.
We've been sending them out the meeting with the people there.
Right, right. No, no, I know, we've been...
I figured out what the next one is. Is it, is it the first week in March?
It's the Monday, so it's March 2nd.
March 2nd.
And that's at what time usually? Because I'm...
Four thirty to six thirty.
So either Jackie or Jen haven't had a chance. I mean, I've had one, I've gone to one meeting.
I've gone to two.
Yeah, so that...
But you can talk about that. All right. Does anyone have anything else? All right then. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.